Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Jim Brennan. I'm the owner of McKelvey Homes. And I just want to thank you for coming out in this weather today. I'm an old mailman, so I'm used to this stuff. But we are going to start our program in a few minutes. Councilwoman Lisa Clancy's en route. And I'm going to wait until she arrives. She should be here any minute now. So appreciate your patience. I'm sorry we're starting a little bit late. But as I understand it, parking lot's pretty full. And it's great that we have this great facility here at Afton.
No heat.
Sorry?
No heat.
No heat? Zach, can you turn some heat on?
You want my harsh blanket?
I've got a coat here, by the way. So we'll be starting in a few minutes here. Thank you. Welcome. As I mentioned just a few moments ago, I'm Jim Brennan. I'm the owner of McKelvey Homes. And I want to thank you all for coming tonight to learn about our plans. The first thing I would like to recognize is change is part of... When you're at my age, you understand that even more. I'm a baby boomer. So I apologize to some of you millennials out there. We do want you to know that we really do care about your thoughts on our project. That's why we're meeting with you before we do any submission to St. Louis County. We were very fortunate to purchase the surplus land at Resurrection Cemetery. And we are not invading any of the grave sites whatsoever. And we'll talk more about Resurrection and its rich history. Our goal is to create a premier residential community in Afton that will be respectful of a special and sacred location and preserve the natural beauty of the site. What we're going to do today is we're going to talk about our company. We're going to review our preliminary plan. We're going to show you the kind of homes we intend to build. And then we're going to try to devote the majority of the time to your questions and comments. And our objective is to get your feedback and any concerns that you have. We're going to try to adjourn at 8:30. And I would like to recognize Councilwoman Lisa Clancy, who is also the chairwoman of St. Louis County Council. So Lisa, thank you for being here. Also, we have State Representative Doug Vach, who's here. And Doug, thanks for all the work you did for Afton's development here. We invited other representatives and senators. I don't know if any others are here today. If they are, I'd like to recognize you. Thank you for being here. I'd also like to recognize Mike Shamia and his partner Steve Walkenbach, the saviors of our beloved Tower of P. Mike, on behalf of the entire St. Louis community, I want to thank you for what you're doing. My girlfriend Rose, who's my wife for 40-plus years, and I spent many hours playing the bar three, getting golf balls there, doing butt-butt with our boys, and batting cages. And what you're doing is very special. I'd also like to thank the people that have reached out to me to give me their views before they've even seen our plan. Especially Michael Burton. I know Michael is here somewhere. Michael, you know, as we've said, we've talked many times. I may not agree with you, but I respect you. I admire you for your passion and your interest in improving Afton. So thank you for that. We've tried to incorporate any of the suggestions already, and I think you're going to like our plan. A few housekeeping things. If you haven't signed in, please do so with your name, address, and phone number, and email. And if you can wait till the end for questions. I do want to start off and talk a little bit about McKelvey Homes. We're the oldest builder at St. Louis. It was established back in 1898 by James McKelvey, who was a building commissioner in the city of St. Louis. McKelvey has credited with building the first gas station in St. Louis. And I don't know what we have out there, but you'll see. Anybody go to Crandall Park? This is Grand and King's Highway back in the 20s, about the time Resurrection was established, where they used horses and mules. The next one, this is in Clayton, Lay Road. This was a pretty big breakthrough, because before they used to have to dig those ditches by hand. And this was the machine. So I don't know how many workers they needed to watch that machine. And then this is in Morgan Ford and Lawford. Anybody ever go to Hilltop Bar? Right there. You can see the ground and how primitive those conditions were at that time. Our history is real important to us. When I bought the company 20 years ago, Bob McKelvey told me, "I'm selling you my assets, but I'm lending you my name. Please respect it." Bob just turned 91. After three generations, decided he had enough of them. He was a pioneer at St. Charles and went into St. Charles in the late 50s, early 60s, buying lots for $1,000 each and building homes for $10,000 each back then. We're building currently at nine locations throughout the metropolitan area. We're also doing several individual home sites throughout West County and custom homes. Our premises, some key ingredients from McKelvey Homes. We go for prime locations. And I got to tell you, this is the best location in St. Louis County right now. Superb designs. We spend a lot of time focusing on the curb appeal, what people want to buy in their homes. And we're real proud of those homes. And we'll show you many of them tonight. Our reputation, that's what it's all about for us. When we say we're going to do something, we do it. We're also very proud of our quality. We are all union. That is very important to us, because there's nothing like union craftsmanship. And lastly, personal service. We're not the largest builder around. And what we do is allow people expensive customization of their home. I or one of my sons go to every closing. And every one of our customers gets my card with my personal cellphone. Last week at 11:00 PM, I got a text message from a lady who just closed, and her carbon monoxide detector went off. Her hot water heater had a defect. We had a plumber there by 5:45 in the morning. I answered the text at 11:15. Now, that is important to me, being responsive to our customers. They're paying a lot of money for their home. They deserve it. We also believe it's very important to give back to the community. My parents taught me that. And we've been recognized as one of the most philanthropic companies in St. Louis by the St. Louis Business Journal for the second year in a row. And it's not us just giving money. Our employees devote many, many hours on a volunteer basis to a variety of charities and philanthropic efforts within St. Louis. I'm also delighted to announce tonight that Payne Family Homes will be building with us in one of the villages. We've done many projects together. They're the second-largest builder in the state, and they have a great reputation. And I'm proud to announce Jerry Kepner to talk a little bit about Payne Family Homes. Jerry?
Thank you, Jim. Payne Family Homes doesn't go quite as far back as McKelvey Homes. We started in 2006 as Manlin Homes. And in 2009, it was a management change, and the name was changed to Payne Family Homes. In 2009, Payne Family Homes was named one of the fastest-growing home builders in St. Charles County by Zenola Research Company. In that 2006, we had 10 closings. Fast forward to last year, we closed 302 homes. In addition to being a builder, we're also involved as is McKelvey in the community. For six years, Payne has been the St. Jude Children's Home Research Hospital Dream Home Builder. We have raised more than $6 million for St. Jude. Our current dream home is located in the Sanford Farm Community in the city of St. Charles. We currently have 21 communities in St. Louis and St. Charles Counties, ranging from Wildwood to O'Fallon, Missouri, to Dart River. And if you have an opportunity, you can see the homes that we are proposing to build on the Resurrection Site in one of those communities. Jim?
Thanks, Jerry. I'm going to talk a little bit about the site itself. And we have an aerial here. You probably know this better than me. The site in question, Resurrection Cemetery property, is 301 acres. More of us Catholics would get cremated. You can fit a cremated body in a lot less space than a regular casket. And so the Catholic cemeteries has decided they don't really need this land. And rather than sit there idle to put it to use, we are very fortunate to be the lucky builder to get this site. What we're talking about purchasing is approximately 70 acres out of that 301 acres. And that's this area right here. Ordered by McKenzie Gardens, the cemetery itself, and then Pebble Hill subdivision on the east. One of the other things I want to point out when we're talking about this war, there is an area right along Treesbury Creek. It's about 23 acres. And we've been in discussions with Arch Diocese and various agencies about having the Arch Diocese dedicate that as a nature preserve of 23 acres. In addition, and Jim Hall will be here talking more about our site, in addition to the acreage that we're going to have within our site for common ground for wildlife and other uses. We're going to show you the entrance volume here. This is going to be a prestigious community. So we're going to have a real nice brick-and-stone entrance. Our plan is to come in off the existing stoplight across from Rogers Middle School. We've employed a traffic study. We're looking at different alternatives with Missouri Department of Transportation to make sure that the traffic flows evenly throughout the community. Some of the highlights of our plan are this. We're going to offer a total of 190 homes of various sizes and styles in four distinctive villages. They're going to range from villas to move-up homes for first-time homebuyers and also luxury homes. Our base prices are estimated to start in the $250,000 range and go up to over $700,000. You may think that's a high price for here, but I can tell you, we build many homes in St. Charles in the 600,000 and 700,000 range. This location is a close-in location, and it's very desirable. Our market research shows that there is a very high demand, and many of you I've talked to in the crowd today that want to stay in Afton or want to come to Afton. Some of you have had to move out of Afton because there was not a suitable housing for you to move up to or move down to. We've also had numerous discussions with many agencies, as well as our professionals at SCI Engineering, Volz Engineering, Loomis Associates, Department of Conservation of State Missouri, the St. Louis County Parks and Recreation, the Great Rivers Greenway, and St. Louis Audubon Society on what we can do to make sure that the natural habitat is protected and preserved. We are planning... Let's go back to another field. Some of the highlights for us. We're going to have a trail system. Our research shows trails are real important. If you go out to our newest community in Dart River, Inverness, we have a whole series of activity with trails throughout. It'll connect trails as well as sidewalks. People like to walk. They like to jog. It's great exercise. We're going to have two lakes that'll be stopped. We're going to have a butterfly sanctuary. Okay, Michael, I know you'll like that. A bee pollination area, and also extensive amounts in the common ground, which is going to total over 20 acres out of our 70 acres. So not only are you going to have 20 acres of our site, you're also going to have an additional 23 acres, which we hope will be dedicated as a nature preserve to the Missouri Department of Conservation. We plan on attracting and enhancing the wildlife. And we have Loomis and Associates that come up with several plans for us. And we'll talk about that later. You know, Catholic cemeteries have a reputation for conservation that actually won awards from the Department of Conservation for some of their efforts at the Kenrick Campus, at Calgary Cemetery for planning, prairie classes, grasses, and enhancing the economic or the wildlife habitat. I also want to talk a little bit about the economic impact. When this community is complete, we feel it has a developed value of $80 million. That should generate new tax revenue for the schools, the fire district, St. Louis County, of $1,003,000 a year. Now, I can't tell you the taxes are going to go down for you, but this is another $1,003,000 coming in each and every year to St. Louis County, which is much needed. We think we're going to create at least 644 jobs based on the statistics for the average jobs created. That's annual jobs for the construction. And our homes are typically bigger, as well as Payne's. So we think it's going to have a tremendous stimulus for this area and satisfy the demand that's much needed. Now, I'd like to introduce Jim Hall, who's our land planner with Hall &amp; Associates, also happens to be the president of Great Rivers Greenway. So Jim, why don't you take us through the plan?
Thank you, Jim. Jim has given you some of the highlights of the plan. Before we get into looking at it in a lot more detail, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a brief explanation of how our concept was developed. Normally, when we look at a piece of ground, and Jim sends me some information and says, "What do you think about this site?" We begin by trying to walk it and look at the lay of the land, try to find out its topography, drainage patterns, availability of utilities, where we will get our access. We look at all these elements upfront. We also look at the surrounding zoning pattern to see if what we're anticipating or what we're thinking we might want to develop would be compatible with that or if we might need to go through rezoning. And that was the case when we started looking at Resurrection Cemetery site. The subject site is currently zoned NU non-urban and unincorporated in St. Louis County. Now, that's kind of a holding pattern that's used until a more appropriate zoning category is either identified or proposed by a developer. So it's currently non-urban. The existing cemetery is a legal non-conformant use for that site. And it could remain that way and keep developing that way until the end of time. But we look at the prevailing residential pattern around our site. And we've noticed that everything in this area here, this is McKenzie Gardens, Pebble Hills, or Pebble Hills subdivision across the street. And all the adjoining subdivisions to the south are all zoned R5, which is 6,000 square foot residence in St. Louis County. Now, what that means is that you're able to have one home for every 6,000 square feet of site area minus the streets. Just for example, McKenzie Gardens subdivision, right here, is developed with 201 single-family lots on just under 40 acres. That comes out to be about 5.1 units per acre. And that's no common ground or anything in there. If we were to try to utilize that same zoning category for a piece of property under that density, our 70-acre site would yield almost 357 homes. But that would require substantial grading and clearing of the site. I've worked with McKelvey Homes for a long time, and I know that's not the way they like to develop property. And as we went through our preliminary discussions with the Arch Diocese, they made it very clear that's not the type of building they were looking for either, especially next to their beautiful and historic cemetery. So we began trying to prepare or prepare a concept plan that would concentrate on minimizing impact on the existing site, the features of the site. We did this by trying to use existing bridge lines for our roads that would minimize the grading that we had to do. That would also allow us then to put our lots off both sides of that road and have a walkout-type condition that would allow us to grade the site minimally and keep the natural drainage ways and existing vegetation intact. Those are some of the primary things that we went for, and that's what developed our concept for the Preserve. Our plan, if we go to the next slide, please. This is the detail of the plan. This shows, as Jim mentioned, 190 units on approximately 70 acres. Utilizing where the bridges are on the site allows us to start defining some areas that would be broken up into natural village areas. It was a great concept for us to be able to work with our marketing and say, "This area is kind of self-contained. We could have one unit type here. We could have another type of unit here on this ridge." And that's how we developed our site. So we wound up with four villages in this area. The estates, shown down here in this light color, are 80-foot-wide lots. Those would be the most expensive homes within the development. The next area would be the manors, shown up here. These would be the lots that would be developed by Payne Family Homes. And they would be 62-foot-wide lots. The next area is the glen. It's kind of split up. We have a small area here, some here, and here. But they are 50-foot-wide lots. And this is a new product that McKelvey has just developed, and it's been very successful for them. And there's a high demand for these type of units. The next area is the villas, shown right here. These are 40-foot-wide lots. It's important to note that all of these are detached, single-family homes. There are no attached units being proposed in this development at all. But at 190 units on only 70 acres, our density is only 2.7 units per acre versus the 5.1 that you see in McKenzie Gardens. That's just for a reference, so you understand the difference. We have about half as many homes. We have a little bit more than half the homes on that piece of ground that we could develop normally. We will be requesting rezoning to an R3 residence district rather than the existing R5, which is the predominant zoning pattern. This means we have one lot for every 10,000 square feet of site area. That would be the maximum yield we'd be allowing. But in reality, what our plan is showing is only one lot for every 16,200 square feet of lot area. So we are much smaller, much less dense than even that zoning category would allow. But that's stepping down two categories from what is the prevailing development pattern. Again, as a comparison, just so you know, McKenzie Gardens has a piece of property that's 40% smaller than our property, but they have 11 more lots than we have in our whole development. Access to our site, as Jim mentioned, will be provided at this location here, which is directly across from Rogers Middle School. This is a signal line intersection here. It's at the top of the hill. We have good site distance in both directions. That's really where it needs to be. It would be a bidirectional access point came in here. It would have a left turning lane out. We'd pull right into a traffic circle. And this access would be shared. We provide a secondary entrance that is shared access for Resurrection Cemetery here. We have some of the renderings that you'll see later. We have a gated entrance to the cemetery. It's going to be a beautiful entry area into our development. The access for most of our lots is provided by cul-de-sac streets. You can see those here. Number one, cul-de-sac streets are very desirable for the homebuying public. Everyone likes to live on a cul-de-sac. It's a little private area. It cuts down on the amount of traffic and everything else. But also, it continues our concept for the preservation area that we wanted to do. Because if we were to try to connect these and make it into circular streets or curvilinear streets or closed streets, it would wind up grading a lot more of the property. We'd be able to get more yield, but it would also mean that we'd be grading a lot more and clearing a lot more property. As Jim mentioned, we're trying to save as many trees on the site as we can. Our plan shows a non-disturbed area that we're going to try to maintain all around the perimeter that ranges from about 20-foot minimum up to maybe about 80 feet. The most common is about 20 to 40 feet, though. It would be undisturbed to do that area. So that means we'll be able to save the trees in that area. We've tried to cut our grading back to that point where we're not approaching on that area at all. What's important to note, though, about that buffer is not that it's just a linear dimension, but when we put our houses on the lots, our lots are much deeper. Our lots are between 130 and 140 feet deep. So when we put on our houses, we still have a big backyard. Plus, that 40 feet really winds up with being about a 70 to 80-foot setback from the property lines itself. So our houses will be set back about 70 to 80 feet, in some cases even as much as 100 feet from those property lines. So it's not like we're putting houses right on top of where your houses are in there. Further, by stinking out of the drainage waste that we're able to do, as Jim mentioned, we're going to have 20 acres of common ground. Big swaths of common ground all through the development, which corresponds to the existing creeks that allows to keep those open and free and not impacted at all by our development. We also have a system of trails that will be connected to our eternal sidewalk system throughout the development. So all of our villages will be connected, and you can walk from one to the other, or you can walk in the woods if you prefer. We have proposed two stop ponds on the site that'll also help serve and meet our stormwater needs. Rather than a dry basin, though, it'll actually be a wet basin so that we can turn that into another amenity and stop that for fishing. But when you combine our 20 acres of common ground and with the 23 acres that we are working with the Arch Diocese on seeing as a preserved natural area, you'd have 43 acres of common ground in this development. The 20 acres alone is almost one-third of our site. That's very uncommon for a developer to be able to say, "I'm giving up 30% of my property, and I'm paying a premium for that, but I'm going to leave it in common ground." That's the way McKelvey does their development. We think that will be a tremendous benefit to the community. We know it'll be a tremendous benefit to our residents. When we were looking at putting in 43 acres of common ground, we thought, "Well, that's enough. We're doing a lot." McKelvey wanted to go further. And as Jim mentioned, we contacted many specialists and many experts to find other ways that we can enhance that area and make it even more of an amenity and more of a preservation area. We're going to have many include pollinator gardens, habitats for birds, bees, bats, and wildlife in general. The existing area, if we go back in place, this existing area here is a major corridor for wildlife right now. A lot of deer come through there. And I'm sure as the cemetery, we tell you that sometimes that's a little bit of a problem. But it's a wonderful amenity, and we want to preserve that and keep that open for the wildlife. So as I conclude this part of the presentation, there'll be an opportunity for us to talk in more detail if you have questions on the plan itself. But I think that you'll see that through the design of our residential villages, the preservation of the large common ground areas containing lakes and trails, by the preservation of the enhanced areas, the creation of the enhanced areas that we're putting in their site, our community will be a tremendous asset to the larger Afton community as a whole. And we feel that that justifies the name, the Preserve. So I'd like to turn it over to Jim now, who will take you through and tell you a little bit more detail about the homes themselves.
Thank you, Jim. Phil, we'll keep this up for a moment. I don't know if you can see it or not, but real pink in here. You'll see different colors. That's what our friends at Loomis Associates have designated. You'll see these areas here, areas there. I think there's some over here also, Phil, in the glen. Those are all areas to attract wildlife, butterflies, insects, the bats and the owls. My sister lives up in Chicago. One of my brother-in-law's is a PhD in microbiology. So for his birthday a couple of years ago, she gave him an owl nest. It's great. He sends us beautiful photos of the baby owls that are nested there. And you find out things. I'm a dumb home builder. I don't know how these animals work. But owls do not build their own nest. They take over somebody else's nest. And so we are actually going to be building, if we can go to the houses, Phil, butterfly homes, oop, butterfly homes, owl and bat houses, insect hotels, that whole circle of life. So we're really embracing it. That's why we're calling this the Preserve, because it's not just a name. I've seen many communities and builders that named the Oaks, and there's an apple on Oak tree. This will genuinely live up to its name, the Preserve. We are going to spend a little bit of time talking about our homes here also. This is our designer series. It will be three-car standard, and we're real proud of it. It's our flagship line, and we're building it throughout St. Louis and St. Charles County. The homes are going to range in size from 2,200 square foot ranches to over 4,000 square foot. Base prices of this series, and this will be... Base prices of this series, and this will be in the estates, will start in the mid-four-hundreds to the high-five-hundreds. And I'm sure we're going to have homes in the sixes and the sevens. The next series we have, and you can see our sterling, some of the features of the homes. A lot of craftsmen exteriors. What we're seeing is brick and stone or all siding homes. More popular, frankly, than a lot of the brick homes that I grew up in, in South St. Louis. It's the new look, the modern farmhouse. And you'll see it in many of our communities today. Very, very desirable. My wife's probably at home watching Fixer Upper, Flipper Flop, or the Property Sisters. Those are the exteriors that you see today that are very popular. Very open floor plans also. You notice some of the big kitchens. This is our, back in our Turnberry, from moving around. The Turnberry, that's our flagship. Also, we did this in Rock Hill just last year. Small site on Hudson, half a block from Hudson Heights, Hudson Elementary. We call it Hudson Heights. We opened up, only had ten home sites. We sold six the first day. People camped out to buy them. They start at about sixteen-hundred square feet. This is our Madison, twenty-four-hundred square feet. They'll fit on a narrower lot. Our research also shows that not everybody wants the huge lot. It's more of a plan to take care of. But they want certain features within the home. So these will be two-car garage. Also, we do customization in all our lines. We'll have a ranch home, the Hamilton. My wife rose named only after I took her to see Hamilton. Our Hamilton, our Washington is the biggest home with twenty-nine-hundred square feet, a two-story. And we are currently working on what we've seen, especially in the demographic area of Afton. Many empty nesters are looking to downsize. They don't need the big house anymore. I've talked to several people over recent days and said, we do not want to have a big home anymore. The kids have grown. We want a small, we want the exterior maintained. So we're going to be cutting the grass and shoveling the snow. They'll fit on the forty-foot-wide lots. And they've been very popular in several areas of St. Louis. In this series, we haven't named the models yet. But they're going to range, and we don't know the exact square footage, but as small as thirteen-hundred. I don't know if we'll get anything that small. But going up to three thousand. Many of these will also finish their lower level. South St. Louis, we had basements. Now, as a builder, we call them lower levels. Jim calls them ponds. He may have a pond, I have a lake. So we, we're real proud of the products we have. They're all union-made. And the Liberty Series, we think, will start in the low-three-hundreds. And then the Villas will be the ones starting in the two-hundred. I'd like, now I'd like to turn it back over to Jerry Demmer to talk about the Pink Family Homes.
Thanks, Jim. Pink Family Homes will be offering homes from our Vision and Lifestyle Series. These are ranch, one-and-a-half-story, and two-story homes. Ranching from a little over thirteen-hundred square feet up to thirty-one-hundred, almost four-thousand square feet. They will have two, okay, three-car garages. And at this point, we're projecting sales in the threes, three-hundreds, excuse me. As I said earlier, we have communities throughout St. Louis County and St. Charles County. And these homes can be seen in Wildwood, City of St. Charles, in Wildwood's Main Street Crossing, in the City of St. Charles, at Sanford Farm. It's out of Highway Seventy. And then it'll fall in Orange and Dartford. So we look forward to building in the Afton area. Thank you.
Rick, we are going to open it up for questions now. And before we start, I think we've got a microphone right up here. We thought we were going to have a wireless. But if you wouldn't mind coming up. And I would like to say this. Everyone's entitled to their opinion. I'd really like all of us to be respectful of others. And we'd like to hear from as many people as possible here tonight. So if you can keep your comments as organized and as brief as possible, we appreciate it. I'm not going to put anybody on the clock. But it would be great if you could mention your name and also where you do live. And let's put the site plan back up. And who must be the first one? Yes, sir.
You know, it might take me a while to mosey. I guess rather than a question, then, as a thank you. I kind of spoil the critters back behind my house. I feed the turkey, therefore the deer show up. I have numerous bird feeders in houses. To see what you're doing to accommodate the woodpeckers, the owls we have left that the logging didn't chase away, I'm pretty impressed with that. Especially, granted, not all of it is your prime development area. But I do want to thank you. I've had sixty-two varieties of birds. We've had foxes, we've had coyotes, which normally don't go hand-in-hand, but they seem to alternate years. Yeah, I just, I can't say enough on how that looks. Especially if you get the arch diocese to go around with you on that additional twenty-three acres, is it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what's your name, what is your name?
I'm sorry, Bob Haymeyer. I live on New Hampshire at Ashbury. Big, I know one of the big concerns is going to be the entrance and exit, the egress. That's necessary there. The light that's going in should help. But it would also be nice if there's a way you guys could work with the county to get the county to give some subdivisions a break along McKenzie, too. Because traffic there during rush hour is brutal, even with that stoplight even service. It's sixty, fifty, sixty miles an hour. Katie bar the door and getting out of McKenzie Gardens is difficult. Pebble Hills, difficult. Further on down Foxcroft, Deer Path, that's very, gets a little hairy at times. So if something could be done there to help with the rush hour traffic and also the rush hour cut-through in our subdivision, that would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. I know our traffic engineers were meeting with Mudat and talking about that very thing. McKenzie, this is state-controlled. I think they were looking at another alternative. But thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Pat Brad. I live in Pebble Hill. And I agree with this gentleman. We certainly are going to have to have more exits, entrances, because apparently you haven't been here at rush hour. That's way too much traffic. Right across from the middle school is going to cause serious problems. I am not happy with any of this. The arch diocese took my school, took my church, and now they're taking my neighborhood. I don't live in West County. I don't like any of this. I'm sorry, that's weird.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
I have mixed feelings about the whole thing, but I'm not negative on it. I was part of the power committee group and walked around the whole neighborhood and you got opinions, really prideful. And a lot of the homes on Hurst Green and New Hampshire, what we heard from the community that resurrection promised ninety feet behind those homes. So Michael and I walked behind some of those homes on Hurst Green. They have privacy, because it's eroding back there. Would it not be possible to take some of that twenty-five acres and put a nice green buffer, ninety feet, hundred? I'll go for three hundred. But can't ask for everything. But put the buffer behind those homes. There are lots of deer, iotes, and everything back there. That would be good for a walking path, a good walking path, a good buffer. And I agree with this lady. What about, didn't the cemetery, there was rumor going on that the cemetery was going to have an exit out to Watson Road. And that they were going to let the guys come through. Just a rumor, that I agree with.
Thank you. Yes, yes, sir, back.
My name's Audrey. I live off of Hurst Green. My property sits about ten to fifteen foot above my property. And ever since they stripped the trees out, we had a huge water runoff area which is causing the land to blow out back there. What would you do to correct that problem?
I'm going to ask Dave Bolz from Bolz Engineering to comment on that. Maybe he can direct us where exactly on the site are you talking, sir?
What, ma'am?
Oh, man, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Right below the village.
The Villas.
Villas.
Off of Hurst Green, like McKenzie and Hurst Green. No.
Upper right, the Villas. Stop, you don't.
Why don't you take the other?
Please, please, please.
All those trees from the street, from McKenzie over to your first tree line, that's a dry group bed. When they cut down all the trees.
You're talking about here?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Dave, you want to comment on that?
Sure, sure. You're actually talking about the south cropping line of our site. It goes, I've walked that. And there's actually a pretty deep creek there, like we talked about, where it's eroded in. And so what we were doing is we're trying to avoid that whole area just to not cause any more problems. So that's why we put at least a forty-foot buffer along there. So that is going to be a totally undisturbed area. And I'm not sure if something needs to be done to stabilize it. Is that what you're concerned about, stabilizing somewhere?
Correct. Once you got to squirrel off the trees two years ago, it started causing the land to deteriorate. The water increased exponentially.
Sure, sure. Well, right now, our plan was to just avoid the area so that we wouldn't cause any additional problems. And then actually take our water to the north. So the water that's leaving our site is going in that direction. But maybe we could use something to look at to try and stabilize the situation. I'd have to, I'd have to look at the actual creek. I have walked that and I've seen where the erosion's taking place.
And what was your name and address again, also, please?
Longview, right here, Hurst Green.
Hurst Green. And, okay. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Just to follow up on that. I guess I've lived in this area way too long. I grew up playing over in that area as well as where I live. There didn't usually be the deep cut that's there now. That's all come in the last twenty years. Especially, as she said, since they clear-cut that area up where the Villas is going, that backs up to Hurst Green. So if there's something you guys could do to at least address that situation? Because it's, it's really getting deep behind some of those homes, especially down on the lower side of Hurst Green before it gets to the creek. If you walk it, you know what I'm talking about.
Sure. So if you look at the Villas, the Village area right there, you see where the numbers are?
Right.
Right there? That's going to be basically where the house is. So everything from there towards the street is going to be, because the house will be setting up above the street.
Right.
So we should be taking less water in that direction. And it should be draining towards the street and then into the detention bases. So there'll be less water headed that direction.
So will they have to contact MSD to fix the damage that's already there caused by resurrection?
You know, I don't, I'm not familiar.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there because they're very concerned about their yards, water, like it is.
Yeah, and all our plans would be subject to MSD as well as St. Louis County approval. So we'll make sure we take a look at that area.
That wouldn't be your guys' responsibility, I would think. But MSD ought to fix it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Water runoff is a main problem. I live on Hurst Green, at the corner of Hurst Green in New Hampshire. So where it says the Glen, the manor's there. Over there, yeah. Those houses are going to flood. Okay, because there is a ditch there that we have been filling up for fifty years. And every year it goes down. And every year, we put all the tree limbs and everything else in it. And the water right now, when we have a good rain, we have a river running through there. And that's where it is. And I wouldn't want the water directed towards my house.
So if you zoom out a little bit, Jim, and you're right here?
Yeah.
Okay. So right now, this area right here, the ridge, is pretty much right here. That's where the top of the ridge is. So all of the water from that line flows that direction. And that's probably the problem.
I know, okay.
Is that correct? I actually can't see you.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's gotten more since they cut down the tree discipline.
Sure.
And, but there is a gully there that just keeps filling up and filling up and filling up.
Right. So currently, the drainage area to this location, here's the top of the ridge. And all the water on the right side of that line I'm drawing there heads that direction and goes here. And again, when this road is draining here, and this road is built, basically, there's going to be houses built right here. And the plan is designed, these houses that are built right here, the drain will go toward the street. And then it'll be piped along the street, the inlet that goes through the streets, into detention bases. One of them will be right here. And so all of this water, so basically, after development and after the homes are built, the water on the right side of this line is what would be tributary to there. So we're going to greatly reduce the amount of water that's headed to this location. So again, that's the current drainage area man right there, or drainage area. And it will be just the backyards of those houses. Everything else is going to go towards the streets and then into detention bases. And the nice thing about this site, everything goes to that dip creek right there. So everything should be going to the north. And we can easily take that out.
And Dave, it's safe to say that we are not allowed to increase the runoff onto somebody else's property. So if anything, we will improve the drainage. Through the professional engineering of Bolz Engineering, subject to MSD, subject to St. Louis County approval.
But there will be less water that's tributary to that problem area in a significantly less. And that's because from the house towards the front, just like every house, it's always built up above the street. All that's going to look towards the street. So the only water that should be going to the east at that location is from the backyards of the proposed house. So it'll be, it'll be better.
Yes, sir.
Now you're concerned about the traffic on the kids. Is there any way to make it happen, another exit on the kids?
You know, at first, we had thought about putting an entrance and exit where the existing cell tower is. However, that was not achievable to try to move that tower. You know, we think that, and that's why we went ahead and commissioned a traffic study. So the traffic experts have done the traffic counts, they've done the school hours. I do not have the results of that yet. But I know there's thought that adding a left-turn lane, perhaps, into our site, maybe a right-turn lane into our site would help relieve that. I believe Missouri Department of Transportation has already been looking at McKenzie for possible. Maybe you all have called to try to improve it. Whether we do this project or not, it seems like you have a problem. So, you know, we are going to be addressing the traffic. And hopefully, it will improve. I think that stoplight there, I've been there where I've seen people flying by when it's just flashing during the day. So slowing them down, because that's a pretty big run between Watson and Heady. And having them slow down in between, I think, would be wise. Yes?
I live in, uh, Pebbleville there. And are we going to ideally have access to the lakes and the trails and stuff?
You know, as far as I'm concerned, yes. It'll be part of the Homeowners Association. And, uh, the streets are public. The trails are accessible off the streets and off the sidewalks, uh, just like you walk through neighborhoods now. Uh, I don't see where there's going to be an issue there.
Will, will they have any parking through the lakes and that?
Uh, not other than street parking now. No. Yes, sir.
Roger Gray from Pebbleville. Want to go back to some water issues. Who's going to maintain, who's going to maintain the lakes and the line? And could you point out the collection basin? Uh, I've only seen the one so far.
Dave, you want to, you want to talk about the lakes? The homeowners association, we'll have a homeowners association. I'll point out this also, that with Audubon Society, we're going to have permitted trees. We are not going to allow certain kind of trees that are not native to Missouri. And the homeowners association will be responsible. It'll be part of the written indentment that's going to be recorded on each and every home site. And that homeowners association will be professionally managed. They'll manage the exterior of the Villas and they'll manage all of the common ground, subject to MSD's approval. Dave, you want to talk about the collection areas?
Yeah. So there's going to be four, four detention bases. And I call them detention basins. Jim calls them lakes. The other Jim calls them ponds. But the, the two detention basins that are wet, one of them's in this location, one of them's in this location. And then there's also two basins that are probably going to be dry. And that's why you can't see them very well. But one of them is right here and the other one is actually right here. So there's two dry basins, two wet ones. Uh, and they are maintained, they'll be maintained by the Government Association.
Is the intent of the lakes to, for them to stay wet?
Oh, yeah.
Because we have friends who lived in subdivisions where the lake went dry and they all got it with, like, uh, having to pay to have that lake bring that.
Sure. Well, the lake, there's, there's definitely enough water tributary to these two things to make them wet. The problem, the problem with those other lakes, I'm sure, is that there's silt that's coming to them. And I will tell you, in, in the last twenty years, the, the DNR and everybody, that's, that's a big problem that's been addressed. I don't think that that's going to be a problem anymore like, like it used to be. But I'm sure it's not the tributary area. It's most likely the fact that silt has been going in there in those three years. But most of the silt that's going to go into those is during the construction and McKelvey and all the builders are required to, you know, contain that before it goes into the lakes. So.
Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Becky. I've lived in Acton my entire life. I've owned my own home for fifteen years and I've got two little boys, um, four and seven. I love the idea of this because I want to raise my children here in Acton. I love the school district. I don't want to leave, but we are looking to move outside because we need a bigger house. We want a newer house. I just, I think this is wonderful. I love the trails that I can walk with my kids and the butterflies, all of that. Preserving everything I ever see on. Everybody wants to, you know, make sure nobody else's house is getting hurt or damaged. But I, I think this is wonderful. I want to raise my kids here. I don't want to move to Eureka or St. Charles. So I just want-
I thought the doors go home, baby.
I love this!
Don't worry about those painting guys. Please, sorry, Gary. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Angela. I live on Colleen. I'm from New. We have a growing family and we are really excited to stay in Acton. I grew up in Acton. My husband moved here. We got married. We just had a baby. We're very excited for this. So we wanted to continue to grow and stay in the area. So we're just like, we love this idea. But again, I don't want anybody else's homes to get hurt or troubled. My question is, I've seen our homes come up in this area and it's very hard to sell a four hundred thousand dollar home plus in Acton. What if you cannot get estates to sell? What if you cannot get people to buy seven hundred thousand dollar homes? What are you going to do with all that land? Are you going to move it to other people to buy it, someone to command or first lien? That's my question.
I can tell you, we, uh, we've been in business a hundred and twenty-two years. I haven't been there the whole time. At least if my answer is for this night, are you sure that you could sell these? Uh, I've put my money behind it. Uh, no one will have more money invested in this than me. And I'm very confident. Uh, not too many years ago, we opened a community in Crestwood. I was very fortunate to buy it from Roger Paul Pope right off T. Rose Lane. Uh, Jim and Dave, I can't remember how many homes I was there. Uh, we had people camp out on a Wednesday to buy them on Saturday. We sold ten the first day. And, uh, this is a highly desirable area. How long does it take for you to get to Clayton? How long does it take for you to get to the new aquarium? Uh, you've got rich heritage here. You've got great schools, what, number nine in the state? Uh, and it's great. Thanks. Uh, you got a great harvest district here. Uh, it's been very progressive. And what we've seen, the population of Acton in nineteen seventy was twenty-four thousand. It went down to twenty thousand. If you look at O'Fallon, Missouri, we've built a lot of homes. It was seven thousand in nineteen seventy. I don't know what it is today, but in nineteen ninety it was already up to eighteen thousand. So there's a lot of growth in those St. Charles areas because of the availability of land. As I say, they just sold a home, six hundred ninety-six thousand in St. Charles. It's out there, grinding, fighting, growing. Uh, I, I think our product will be well accepted here. Uh, I've got nieces and nephews, brothers and sisters that live in St. Louis. Spent a half a million dollars on a small home with no closet space, old kitchen, old roof. Uh, Rose and I, our first house was in Compton Heights. And when we moved into the new home thirty years ago, people would ask you, what do you like about your house? And she says, it's new. And they go, well, yeah, duh. We know it's new. She goes, you don't understand. We come home and we have hot water. We have electric outlets that work. The windows work, go up and down. And we spent a lot of money on an old home repairing it. And I'll say this, we built a bigger home and it was even less expensive to operate than the new home. Our homes are energy efficient. They're well insulated. They have the highest, uh, efficiency HVAC system. We have Union Craftsman, HVAC, electric plumbing, all working carpenters, all working the bulletproof home. And I think the product will speak for itself. Yes, ma'am.
So I'm Melissa. I live over down off of Heady across from Fort Hills. And, uh, I'm kind of with the other young families here. We've got three boys at home in a two, three bedroom house. So we're, we're getting a little cramped. Um, my question is, there's been a lot of, a few newer homes in the area by other builders that have not held up to the standard that they promised. What is your, um, I guess, guarantee that a basement isn't going to crack in a year or a window's not going to fall out after I tried to open it or my boys ran into it? Um, I'm just trying to understand the percentage of, um, repairs that go into the home after it's built.
Well, we have human beings building homes. Uh, the hot water heater, the gasket fluid, uh, we pull Tuesday. Uh, it's unfortunate that happened, but we were there to repair it immediately. We employ quality contractors. Uh, John Belcher does a lot of our foundations. He is out there himself working at the field. His wife has a business degree. She runs the company. Uh, he's out there working. I know that he does a good job. We give a guarantee, a ten-year guarantee, a written warranty that's going to cover the home on any major structural defects. We get a lot of business on referral. People that have built one, two, three, four McKelvey homes, uh, through this last housing recession, ten years ago, our company grew. We're not highly leveraged. We want to stay around for a long, long time. I want to keep this company another hundred and twenty-two years. And what I said to everyone during the last recession, if I come out of it with nothing but my reputation, it'll be a success. Not only did we come through with our reputation, we came through and we grew. And the company just finished a record year. Uh, so we, when we say we're going to do something, we do it. Uh, I can't tell you that every time we put anything in that it's a hundred percent correct, but it's not for lack of trying. Who's next? Yes.
I'm Linda Arnold and I'm a residential real estate specialist and home banker. I'm not here to sell your homes, although I'd be happy to do that. I'm really here to talk to the point that you just really wanted clarity on, and that's about McKelvey as a builder. So I thought about how I sell homes and I've worked with McKelvey several times in helping people build homes. But I also sell resale homes. And I sell McKelvey homes that are being sold again as somebody moves on, as they get transferred. And those homes are in high demand even as resale. And I think that says a lot about a builder, that you can resell their homes again. So as you think about maybe buying in this area, you'll be able to sell your home later because these are great floor plans. I'm not going to take too much time, but I wanted to give you some words that came to mind when I think about McKelvey Homes as an agent. First of all, quality, workmanship, innovative, ethical, responsive, respectful, respected, professional, craftsmanship, impressive, stylish, distinctive, prestige, well-respected, principled. I said respected twice, sorry. Principled, conscientious, meticulous, family, and thoughtful. And I want to close by saying they actually really care about what you think. That's why they're here. So tell them everything you think because they're listening.
Yes, sir.
Is that where the drainage area goes down from Colleen right over there?
Yeah.
Dave, you want to come up?
That's going to make it range as it is, but that is where the drainage goes through there right now. Yeah. There's one crossing, one crossing for the road, but that's, that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to ask about that line of trees that's coming down behind the subdivision. On the, I see, in the, in the, in the fancy guys. See the line of trees right down there?
Here.
Well, you're going to have to plant a lot of them because the cemetery has decimated all of that ground with all of their sower off their trees. Not that I like the cemetery, but I hate what Carlson has done to us. He's a piece of crap.
Ma'am, these trees-
The tree line, are those in the yards or are they behind the yards?
Uh, they're, let me explain this. This is the lot itself, the lighter color.
Okay. So they're going to be behind the house?
This is the lot itself. And these darker trees are existing trees that we'll retain. Some of their gaps there, and you see these trees here that I pointed in, those are all new trees that we're going to plant on the planet.
Well, honey, you haven't looked at that ground lately because I have to tell you, there's not much standing behind those homes you're building. But it doesn't matter. If they have to plant them, you're talking about planting on trees. But I wonder if those were behind their houses?
Yes.
Or is it in their yards?
Yeah, no. It, uh, some of them, you can see a few of them here look like they're encroaching on the yard itself, but most of them are outside of it, in, in the common ground. So this is a minimum forty foot common ground and the darker ones are the ones that you think exist according to, uh, Loomis, the tree survey. But we will supplement that. We want a buffer as much as you do. It works both sides like a fence, both neighbors.
Two questions. One, I know you're still in tiny states with the projected start date. And two, uh, when do you expect to have the plans available online for you?
Uh, we're pretty respectful of not posting the plans on our website. We do not want to be so presumptuous to, uh, think that planning zoning and Singhless County Council's going to approve it. Uh, we're happy to share this with you. Uh, I'll give you my phone number and my email if you'd like, uh, to talk more about it. Uh, but, uh, we want to take input in tonight. Uh, I'm sure we'll be talking with others about it. We'll think and deliberate on the comments that are made, try to incorporate what we can. I'm sure there's more people who want to speak tonight. And then we will probably start with planning zoning staff. I know there's a couple of members here in the audience from, uh, Singhless County. Uh, we'll meet with them, get their views, and then try to formulate a plan that we would then submit to planning and zoning, hopefully sometime this spring. And then there'll be another public hearing. Uh, this one is our hearing, but then Singhless County would have their own hearing. And you'd be welcome. You'd be invited. I think they typically invite anyone within three hundred feet of the site. We invited almost nine hundred homes. So we might well be on that because we want as much input as we can. I know, uh, signs were put up and some of you did not get one of the letters, nine hundred letters were sent out. Uh, but you, you heard about it and we welcome you, uh, here today. And if you know others, uh, you know, uh, have them inquire with the McKelvey Homes or the Payne Family Homes, we'd be happy to share the information and get your input. If everything went perfect, we might get approval sometime summer. And then we would have to, uh, day holes, we'll be doing our plans. Uh, if you ask me how long that takes, it's always too long. And, uh, probably sixty, ninety days. And then we'd go through a round of approval with all the various agencies. So I would love to be moving there this year, but I don't know if that's going to happen. Yes, sir.
Mike Angelai, carpenter, jeweler, retired. Uh, lady asked a question about concrete. There's two things you can know about concrete. It gets hard and it cracks. You're dealing with MSD. MSD, if you've been in construction, is one of the finest personnel crew you'd have to deal with. I can trust this gentleman over here is talking that they're going to do a lot of runoff headed in the north, which will help that culvert ditch problem. I love the fact that you have the buffer line going around the property with, and I really appreciate that you're, uh, still incorporating twenty acres of woods left in it, trails, tiny. And to save a little bit of wildlife. I don't like the idea. I like seeing the deer walk out on Tower T. You're leaving some. There's going to be a few deer I can see, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Acton is an older community. You're building progress. Uh, the expensive homes are what? Half mile, three quarters of a mile from the city limits? How many people that got commute to Clayton or Acton or out of Clayton to Acton or to downtown would love a little bit of this community? It's a, it's a tax benefit to Acton. We're an older, smaller home-based community. I think it's a great thing. I, I came in here leery. You guys convinced me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. St. Louis is probably one of the best spots in the entire country for craftsmanship. I've traveled the entire south. I've traveled the writing works, the work with non-municipal. The quality of work comes out of St. Louis. It's probably the best in the country. Thank you.
That's it. Suzie.
Hi, Susan Mabbes. Uh, I'm like Linda Arnold. I'm a Realtor with Coolabaker-Gundbaker, but I'm also a homeowner of McKelvey Homes. Uh, when you built T. Rose Lane, there were twenty-three lots.
Twenty-two, okay.
Twenty-three, we were lot four. So, uh, I can, I can attest to the quality of the home we built. We've been there fifteen years. We've never had an issue, I can tell you. Easy to work with. We did change our floor plans when we were making, uh, building it. Very easy to work with because we wanted to make some changes. Easy to be done. Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of this as a Realtor. I think as a community, it's the best thing that can happen to a community because everybody grows. Homeowners that are in there right now, I can tell you, your property values will go up because you're going to have this in your community right now in store. So perhaps your chances will go up somewhat as well, but your values will go up. So look at it as positive. Businesses, schools, everything will be a positive for you. So you have to look beyond just a little thing. And the thing that he's done to preserve the nature, I think is awesome. So, uh, it's, it's a beautiful plan and I applaud you, Jim.
Thanks, Suzie.
Hi, my name is Nick. I'm your fire chief here at the Acton Fire District. And I just wanted to say, uh, that I don't think any of the growth should be done to harm to these people. And I know you're going to address the runoff, or at least I hope you do. And the buffer is important by a cap, that's if you're going to do that. But representing the community, I think that, uh, there hasn't been enough emphasis on this, that new growth is important for Acton. And, and I can tell you that Acton used to be getting older, but it's not anymore. We are the only fire district that I can think of around here. Well, our calls, uh, did not go up this year. And that's a sign that younger people are moving into our community. Because the younger people don't call us, the older people do. So there's been some talk about, you know, what's with this community, what would this neighborhood do to the fire district? And we wouldn't anticipate a lot of calls on it. So we're not worried about that. But I do think it's, I'm a little self-serving up here and I just want to be transparent with you that this is two hundred thousand dollars to the Acton Fire District. And again, I don't want that money at anybody's expense here. And I'm, they need to address all of your concerns like they are. But an ambulance costs two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that burden comes off of you. New, new growth in the community is what keeps you happy and paid for all the increases and everything that happens around here. So it's important. Uh, I look at Acton fires and when you're driving down gravel and there's still some openings in those businesses and these restaurants, they would love to have these people be part of this community. Uh, and I think, I think this is a good project. Again, I don't want anybody to be harmed by, but from the entire community of Acton, I think this helps a lot of people.
Thanks, Sheena.
How's it going, Mr. Brennan?
Good, how are you?
Don't get, um, forgive me for bouncing around a little bit here. Um, just a couple things. Um, if you, uh, punch out a little bit on this map, what's the distance between the back of Tower T and the back of the properties of the estates? What's the distance between that?
You know, you're, you're talking from the Heady Road?
No, from the, from the dragon range, the back of Tower T up to right up there. Because it's, you said earlier that it's going to be about, uh, some of the buffers on this is just going to be twenty feet?
Uh, no, it, it'll be a minimum of forty foot buffer around the entire perimeter. A minimum of twenty of those feet will be undisturbed. Because there's some areas that it won't be exactly forty feet undisturbed, but there's some that are, is it eighty, eighty or ninety feet undisturbed?
Okay.
And if, uh, well, Phil, let's go back to the main, uh-
Might be overall.
To the overall.
Okay.
There we go. Anything, Michael, that is the dark green here?
Those are existing.
Those are existing trees that are intended to be preserved and not disturbed.
That's what I'm saying, forty.
Okay. And it is, again, we don't want to overstate it, but I want to tell you it's always going to be forty because with the utilities and doing some of their- And it is, again, we didn't want to overstate it, but I want to tell you it's always going to be forty because with the utilities and doing some of the corrective drainage work, it may get into it more. We only want to grade what we have to grade, right, David?
Yeah. All right, uh, just, just a couple more things.
Sure.
First of all, I just want to thank you for doing this, and thank you, Kelly, for coming out here, actually holding the town hall, and the fact that we have a CEO here. Um, I just want to thank you guys for doing that, and also having a, a Q and A session. Um, not everybody does that, so I really appreciate you guys. And it seems like you've really taken some things into consideration when it comes to this plan, and you've already been listening to the community, and I really appreciate that as well. But, uh, I'm, I'm not completely on board, I'll just tell you, because, um, when you're, when you're, when you were at the driving range of Tower T, and you hit a golf ball out in the distance at the driving range, and you saw that beautiful forest right above it, and you saw all the deer in the background, and, you know, the two properties kind of overlapped it. You know, that was part of the whole experience. And from what I'm seeing here is that there would just be a very small sliver of trees above the driving range, and then we're going to look at the back of houses, and also on top of that, the deer might be over here, but, um, not so much right above the driving range, which, um, was a very, uh, important thing for the experience of Tower T. So I'm having a little bit of a difficulty with that, as well as what Terry talked about before, where these buffer zones, we're talking about, I guess you're saying forty feet. Uh, I've mapped out over two hundred doors, all these people's doors here that, that are, uh, Hurst Green, New Hampshire. And I asked them, you know, what buffer zone they want, and they would talk about fifty feet, a hundred feet, a hundred fifty feet. And it doesn't seem like we're there quite yet. And so I'm, I'm hoping that we can still have that conversation as far as maybe expanding the buffer zone between the existing properties and the properties that you want to build. Uh, there going down in New Hampshire, a lot of the residents here are experiencing lots of erosion, as well as going down Hurst Green. And you were saying that the water is going to be directed at the estates going towards the road and going back up. But right now, the water that is to the right there, that water flows from McKenzie Road all the way down, exactly where that little light goes, all the way down, and then it goes south. Uh, the water goes south, and so I'm curious exactly, um, how that's going to work out.
Michael, what are you saying is it goes into Hurst Green?
It goes down to the back of Hurst Green. That's the erosion that you were speaking about before.
It's south here.
Right, but it go, it, I'm sorry, it goes, it goes east. And then when it gets to New Hampshire, which is where the estates is, then I believe it does come down. And, and there's some residents that live there that can, um, uh, attest to that. And then when you get back to the very bottom of, of New Hampshire, which is the bottom corner there, uh, it goes back up to Higgy. So if that water is coming down and it gets to Higgy, it's going to be stuck. So I just think that's something that you guys need to talk about and need to.
Okay, I just, David, uh, Michael, if I can stop there, an estate falls. David's a professional engineer, he's been doing this for a long time.
There is. Okay, all right. So, so, Michael, uh, right here, the, the drainage currently, this is where that deep ditch is, and it comes down here and then goes this direction. I think what you're talking about is some water that comes across here. Is that, is that right?
Right.
Okay. I don't think it goes south. I think it goes towards this and up into this creek. The, the water's not, not heading towards Higgy right here. I think it's all going to the north.
I, I have some videos to show you, could you just talk about that?
Sure. Well, here's the, here's the top of it that I talked about before, and, and the water, I believe, goes this direction and into, into this area and then up towards the creek. Everything pretty much flows towards that creek.
Okay.
So if you, if there's a specific area, there might be a small area that, that you were talking about, you could probably fix that.
Well, I think there's actually some residents here that actually live there that they're nodding their head with me, and so it's just something I'm, I'm.
There's always individual issues, and I'd be more happy to sit down because like I said, there, you know, I think that that could be an easy fit, so.
Okay, cool. Um, uh, I also want to thank you guys for, uh, you know, you told me I was going to be pleasantly surprised, and I was very cautiously optimistic. But it really is cool what you guys are doing with a lot of it, and I really appreciate that. And, um, I think we're close to coming to something that, you know, it will be a great thing for you. It'll be a great thing for the Afton community, for St. Louis County, for the wildlife, for everybody. Um, I'm pleasantly, I'm, I am pleased with what you guys are doing. Um, I, I just also want to point out that that section over there to the left is a flood plain. So you guys couldn't even build over there if you wanted to because it's already a designated flood plain, which I don't believe they let people build over there. So the way I was always looking at this situation was that was already going to stay green no matter what. So I don't want the impression of we're going to have the arch diocese, you know, uh, ask them to keep that green space because that was given. No, is that not a flood plain? It is.
This area right here, there's flood plain that goes along this creek right here.
Right.
And that's, that's true.
And so one of the biggest concerns from the residents that I've spoken to is the flooding, is the water runoff. This past year, in 2019, we've had a lot of flooding and a lot of crazy weather in St. Louis, and a lot of flooded basements. And so that is a, a big concern for the people that live of New Hampshire and Hurst Green. And, and so, um, the fact that this whole subdivision is going to be built next to a flood plain already, and we're already experiencing difficulties, is still a little concerning to me. But it looks like you guys are, are talking to the right people and, and trying to figure it out. Um.
We will do a good job of stormwater. Uh, I can't tell you that we're going to correct everybody in Afton's stormwater problem. Uh, if somebody lives, uh, across McKenzie Road and has a stormwater problem, we're not the ones creating that. We are going to make sure that our site does not make the problem worse, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to correct some of the problems that the people that are adjacent to our site are experiencing. We've got the professionals. These guys know how to do it, and they're going to be working very closely with San Luis County and with MSD to make sure no additional stormwater is going to leave. That's why we've got the lakes, that's why we've got the dissection areas, so.
And I really appreciate that.
We're going to do it, and, Michael, thank you, thank you for your input. I'm not going to give you credit for the trails. I'm not giving you credit for the butterflies and the bees, but, uh.
Can I just ask you one more question?
Sure.
So you were talking about a ten-year warranty on the houses that you're going to build. What I want to know is, I know you told me that there, you don't think there's going to need to be a, a necessity to blast bedrock, but we're not for sure. And my question is for the people that live in these gray spaces here, if there is problems to their foundations, if there needs to be blasting, what kind of guarantee do you have for those people, uh, in that area as far as their foundations cracking and things like that?
I can tell you that it is highly, highly, highly likely. Uh, we've done the soil testing, and I think rock, David Orshol, maybe here somewhere, I think it's fifteen feet. We don't need to, Dave, is that right? We don't need to go down that low. And so, uh, I would be shocked, uh, if we would have to do that. Uh, I, I have experienced rock as recently as, uh, just a couple of years, uh, the last couple of years in the pair, and we use chipper. Uh, but we will not damage anyone else's home.
But if a house were to be damaged, is there any kind of guarantee for this?
If we damage somebody, we would be responsible. If we create damage, we're responsible for it.
Okay.
Okay. So, and we do not anticipate that we're going to, uh, need to deal with rock any way, shape, or form, right, David?
Well, thank you so much for having us, Tom, and we, thank you, Mr. Brandon.
Thanks, Michael. Yes, sir.
Jean Oliver is on the right-hand side of the picture that you can't see, over Deerwood Drive. Uh, and as somebody who just moved here in the last two years, and then watched the price fluctuate, and that fluctuate just drive up, and no matter what I bid, somebody else outbid me. Uh, this is one of the fastest-growing areas in terms of value of homes all along Watson Road, including this area here. Prices, I sold my house in Precor area and sold it for the same price I bought the house here. But, uh, these are very well-desirable homes for lots of different reasons. And I like a lot of things I see here, but I've been through a lot of these developments. I've watched good, I've watched people come in with really bad plans and bad developers, and I've watched the neighborhood fighting and win when they were bad developers. You can't win in those fights. But I've also seen good developers. And the two things that I control, the quality of development, is what planning and zoning rules are. And while planning and zoning are very good people, at the same time, rules tend to be always behind effect. And you're always trying to catch up to the rules because somebody's always fighting rule change. And the other thing you have to do with that is the quality of the developer. And so trying to understand you and the quality of what's going to happen is important, I think, for our community. At the same time, I would like to be able to get at the engineering studies as quickly as possible. I want to know what assumptions were made in those studies, and I'd like to have that done available to the community prior to your going to planning and zoning, if at all possible, because once planning and zoning comes up, there's a timetable, things move fast. The community has to respond, respond very quickly. So if you could let us know when we can get those documents and tell some of the people here who are clearly community leaders how to get ahold of them and look at them, I think it'd make everybody feel a lot better.
So as part of the process, uh, after this, we'll, we'll develop a preliminary development plan that gets submitted to the St. Louis County, and then they'll review it. And then that'll be public information, and on that preliminary development plan, we're going to, we've actually already done a photographic survey at the, the two-foot interval, so we have a pretty good idea of the existing program we use. There's been soil tests, and as part of the zoning process, we'll submit a grading plan, a proposed grading plan that, you know, the county will have access to, you'll have access to, anybody wants it, it's available. And that'll include the traffic that will be done, and that'll, that'll be available as well. So all of that information will be part of the zoning process when we submit, so you'll have plenty of time to look at those things.
Can they, when they're actually available?
Well, we, we haven't actually prepared them yet, but, uh, you know, based on this meeting, I think what will happen is there'll be some conversations about what, what the final plan should look like, and then we will draw a preliminary development plan, and that will be filed with the county, and then that'll be available for everyone. And I will tell you one, one quick story here. I was with Jim about two or three months ago, he may not remember this, but while I was in his office, he got a phone call from someone, and he said, he said, well, this was a call from somebody who had just closed on a house that he built ten years ago. And he said, uh, they just called me to tell me that when they resold the house, they had an inspection done like we all do, and the inspection came back with zero, uh, issues that had been taken care of. So ten years later, and that was a house that Jim had built, and I just happened to be sitting in his office when that happened by coincidence, but, you know, that was a story that tells the quality that he does. And while I'm stating it also, Payne is another one of my clients, so I can't, I can't just dote on Jim, but Payne is a great builder. I love working with him. Their homes are great, and the quality that they do is, is just, you have to test builders around. And if I have any other builders friends in the audience, you too.
Yes, sir. Oh, right there, okay, sorry. I got these lights, I can't see everybody.
So this came up in the last, when we were dealing with Mitch Barres. So there's no connection between your subdivision and ours? There's no road?
Uh, ma'am, which subdivision?
I'm sorry, I'm in McKenzie Gardens.
McKenzie.
I'm on Queensway, kind of down at the corner of where the estates are. So, um, several people mentioned at that public hearing because they're up against the line, that they really wouldn't want, um, any utility assessments for those new houses coming through their backyards that didn't seem fair to them.
So the utility access, David, do you identify there is that, uh, we would connect to utilities?
You know, I'm sure there's utility easements, and to be honest with you, I don't really control, like, Union Electric or Big Family. I don't really control all those, the union connections or utility connections, but.
I, I mean, there would be enough space between yours, with, with the line of trees that probably that they would get their backyards dug up. Some of us people in New Hampshire don't have much of a backyard.
Sure, sure.
So, you know, they don't want, and they want a big house looming over theirs, you know, because we have small homes.
We haven't gotten into that detail of the utility connections, but I can tell you, I'm confident that there's existing easements, and we would be working in existing easements. And any damage or any, you know, if we, if we had to put a, a utility line through, it would be obviously restored.
Okay.
I'm not really, there's, there's utilities all around this site, so I'm not really very concerned about that.
I was just, you know, and we weren't dealing with people, you know, my, but we're dealing with a different problem.
Sure.
So.
Thank you.
Okay. Look, the designated nature place, that's great, but all of that, we'd like to take part of that. So if other residents, such as this area and Pebble Hills and everything, if we want to come and park it there, we're going to be disturbing these people. So is there a designated, like, parking area that you could make? So everyone, it would be more like a park and not a designated nature preserve or garden preserve? Because like you said, there are walking areas, but I know I would be over there, and I want to park on somebody's drive.
You'd love to build your own home.
I am on a park in Afton, and I intend to stay there. I'm surrounded.
We're in Sierra.
But what I'm saying is, is maybe make an area where residents could come in, or other folks should come in and park. I don't, I don't like people parking in front of my house, because, I mean, it's damn easy, but if you have more than one, two, three, four, five, you know, share and share and share, let's share.
That's something we will consider. Thank you. Can't always see everybody in there, you got these lights.
Hi, I'm Yvonne. I'm presenting at Commercial Real Estate, and I'm the project manager at Afton Plaza, and the new Nine Mile Garden that's coming. Um, I have been in and around commercial real estate for about twenty years, so for those of you doing math, that means I started when I was five. Um, McKelvey Homes has always had an ironclad reputation, and it's very reserved. They always are very thoughtful with their planning, they don't leave any stone unturned, and they build very quality homes. Um, as you can just see from this presentation tonight, he's listening to your questions, he's addressing them, and he's put a lot of thought into not just how this community serves within itself, but how it interacts with everything around it. And that is a sign of somebody who's really, really thinking about not just what he's building, but where he's going. Um, I can tell you all the questions about runoff and things like that. MSD will make sure that there is no runoff. I can tell you they are very, very happy to deal with in, in a good way because they're doing the right thing. Um, different things have been done, including Nine Mile Garden at, uh, Afton Plaza. We're still working with MSD to make sure that I'm not creating any runoff. In fact, there'll be significantly less runoff, and I'm guessing that's exactly what MSD will do here. Um, development, I think that's what they're going to do. Um, I do think, you know, we had a few people stand up and say they'd love to have a bigger home and be able to stay in Afton with their own families, and I think that's a real thing. I've talked to many people who grew up in Afton and have since had to move out to Fenton or Eureka or Oakville in order to get a home to fit their families. And they didn't want to. Nobody wants to leave Afton. Every time I meet anybody who's from Afton, they don't tell me they're from St. Louis. They tell me they're from Afton, okay? Afton is very proud, and they should be because it's incredible, and I've so enjoyed working with this community while I've been here. And this is the future for those families that are growing and want those modern amenities. And I think we just have to give this guy a chance. We have to listen to what he's saying, and not just take our peoples in the mud and, and say, "Not here, I won't warrant it." Um, because I think what he's offering is something that is incredible and will be really great for the community for years to come.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Tranann Harcourt, and I'm one of the folks that lives along Hurst Green Lane. Uh, our house in the one next door, we're probably the worst as far as having the, um, the mini Grand Canyon in the background. There, our, our ditch is about ten to twelve feet deep in that area, so I can assure you, you probably won't have to, uh, have to blast your bedrock because it's down twelve feet and it's going to go even farther. Unfortunately, uh, as Andrea said before, the runoff in this area has gotten tremendously worse. The erosion, it has increased in, in, uh, in its speed since the land was basically. The erosion has increased in its speed since the land was basically, there's an area back there that was basically clear cut. So the water runoff has gotten much worse. We have neighbors who've had fences washed out because the water does go through there at quite a speed where we've got a lot of rain. It's not ending. When we first moved into the home about 25 years ago, our ditch was about maybe 18 inches deep and I could take my little kids across there like no problem. Our elderly neighbor could push a lawnmower through there and now it is 10 to 12 feet deep in our area. So that is a major concern and as I say, the erosion has gotten much more rapid in the past, well, has 12 to 18 months since they cleared up the area. My second concern, you know, lovely development, but frankly, we moved on behind our property. So the idea of having the villas as a backdrop to my backyard is not especially appealing. The more distance you can leave before, between our property line and the back of the housing property line, the better. Because honestly, I'm not, our realtor was not the only one who told us that the cemetery area did not end up as a subdivision. That was pretty common belief at that time because of course, people were still being buried there.
We're going to show you this slide here and I'm not sure, what is your address?
6417.
6417.
To the left.
But 6337, oh, 6337 is a good example, Hurst Green. This home...
Actually, we're far down. We've got 6405.
We have this as an illustration, we don't have it on everyone, but it should be comparable. This particular existing home, 6337, anybody here living in that home?
One below it.
6401?
Yes.
Okay, those look pretty comparable. 6337, it's 100 feet from the lot itself, from the yellow line of the property line to the right-of-way is 100 feet, I believe. This home, the rear of that home is 24 feet from the rear of the existing property line. Our new villa, and what we're doing is we're showing one of the larger footprint homes. We've got a variety of homes. They range from 36 feet to 70 feet deep. This home here, Dave, our lot is 130 feet plus there's an additional 40-foot common ground buffer. So this home, if we would be so fortunate to be able to have the project approved, there would be 80 to 90 feet from the rear of our new home to the property line, whereas this home is actually only 24 feet off the rear property line. So in that, 104 feet minimum distance between those two homes. These villas are going to be maintained professionally. They're going to be landscaped, the grass, the snow, they're going to be taken care of because these people have earned it. They don't want to have to do that anymore. And so the homeowners association is going to take care of it, but there's going to be a very large distance. If you went over to some of the homes that are on the other side of the street, those homes are 40, 50 feet apart.
That's what... 12 foot deep is 12 foot deep and I think that is all the refrigerator in the bottom one. In fact, so this is a bad area. You know, there has been some studies done on which area because there are some jurisdictional concerns that you always have where according to your budget, once you touch certain areas, for this for example, where you need to get hung up. This, I believe, was not jurisdictional, so that is just a dip. So, you know, there's a give and take. We could probably fix some of that, but the exchange would be, we would have to remove some of the existing trees that are in that area in order to do it. So it would be helpful at some point to have a conversation with some of the residents right there and see what they want to do because I know that the pipe, I think it's a 24-inch pipe comes underneath McKenzie right here and that's what's causing the erosion. It's not actually, after we're done with this development, we're going to have very little water before we tributary to that. So we're not going to cause any diserosion, but if there's a way to fix that or to repair it, I think that that could be done fairly easily because it's really, you know, because honestly, not that much water coming along there. So we can do that, but there's going to be give and take because that's going to be removing trees that are sitting there and have been there for a long time. So, but we can look at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ray. I grew up in another part of Athens, but now I live at 7717 New Hampshire, which is right at Ashbury. And I came in here skeptical because, mostly because of the wildlife, I'm sorry to see it go. I appreciate that you are incorporating bat houses, owl houses, butterfly houses and all of that. I worry about the turtles. I haven't seen, I had not seen until a few years ago, I had not seen a turtle in Athens for 50 years and just a few years ago I started seeing some turtles again, so I hope they can also incorporate some kind of turtle habitat. That would be great.
And natural.
I want to comment on the Tower T, the new Tower T and the buffer that you have between the houses. I happen to have a sister who lives in Illinois and she lives on a golf course and there is no buffer at all, so I appreciate a 40-foot buffer. It would be great. I understand you can get 90 feet, but you know, that's going to mess up your whole plans and I don't think that that's going to work. So I do, I did want to comment on that because some people live on golf courses, they like it. Tower T 2.0 is not going to be anything like the old Tower T, so we're moving on from that and so this is just the new reality, I think. And I do think Athens needs move-up housing. And I know everybody said that the houses across from the high school wouldn't sell and those sold really quickly. I think there were also people in line to buy those and that's, I guess that's, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
My name is Joe Hoffman. I live on Eady Road. I must say, and pleasantly surprised, I remember Tower T developed, I grew up in there, it was 158 houses on 27 acres and that was just, that was just way too much. This is, must have had a much better impact prior area. But my big concern is what effect might it have on our sewers? Like our sewer system is 60 years old and I remember a few years ago when Ransfield was built, over by the library on Crabwood, after it was done, you know, and existing houses started having, talk about people in the ditch, having sewage back in their basements because their sewers were currently being overloaded in that corner. What's going to be done to make sure that doesn't happen to us?
So you're talking about the same thing?
Yes.
So the existing trunk line actually flows along this creek right here, it's actually on the other side of the creek, so that's where the trunk sewer is right now. And what we're going to do is we're actually going to take like a sewer line through this area and it will all go that direction. So we're going away downstream from everybody into the trunk sewer that's right here, so we won't be impacted. And that's a different size, I don't want to exaggerate that trunk sewer, but that's where the main sewer is. Everything's going away from, that's the nice thing about this creek right here, everything's going that direction.
Okay, that's much better. Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Shane?
Yeah? I'm going to be really brief, but my name is Shane Grasser. I'm a electrical contractor. My family business has been doing work for McKelvey Homes since the 70s. We've been doing work for Payne Family Homes since they started as Manly Homes. You know, you might think I'm a little bit biased, but I tell you, we do work for dozens and dozens of contractors. We wire hundreds of homes a year. My wife and I bought McKelvey Homes 30 years ago. We still live and raise our family there. My parents, when they sold the house, I grew up in, bought McKelvey Home, still live in it today. These are two very good builders you've got here that are going to do this. Both have a lot of integrity in this St. Louis area, both stand behind what they say. Like I say, you really couldn't have gotten two better builders to do this development. So I know, like I say, you don't know me, but they do have a very good reputation and I'm sure they're going to do a very good job on us, so that's all I'm going to say.
Thanks, Shane. I think it's time for Shane to buy a new house. I actually didn't know that either, that McKelvey Homes. So that's good to know. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
You talked about the buffer, the green tree and all that. What's going to be along McKenzie? Are we, as you drive down McKenzie, you're going to be in those people's backyard and you're going to have trees or something visually subpar.
We will retain the fence that's along there now and Dave, I don't, are we going to be grading anything? We haven't shown any tree growth along McKenzie, but these home sites are pretty deep still.
Yeah. The one thing that Jim mentioned, but he did it kind of briefly, is not only is there a 40-foot buffer here, but these lots are, some of them are 140 foot deep, which is normally 125 is typical, so those lots are, you have an active gap in all of these lots. The goal is not change that as little as possible. That's the goal.
I'm talking along McKenzie.
Right, yeah. And what I'd say, sir, we may not show it here, but if I'm going to sell these homes and there's a busy McKenzie Road there, those people are going to want landscaping. And if you look at, we may, whether it's on the plans for St. Louis County or not, as the builder, these people are going to spend a lot of money for homes. They deserve a nice view and so we will more than likely have a landscaped buffer. I don't know, you guys didn't put that under already. We would have a landscaped buffer, but I've never heard of that. That's hard to get to the office. They're going to claim each other. One must be going to blame. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I'm cutting logs in this concrete course. If the seller wants to sell that land and these people don't develop it, somebody's coming in Athens.
You don't want me to put a shopping center there?
So, you know, I'm not sure, I like it generally, I'm not sure I like it in detail, but for all you people who have problems, you gotta get those problems, you know? You gotta get to the right people and keep after them and after them and ask yourself, "How are you going, how is this above going to make it better?" Because without much money going through, there's the opportunity to improve some of the deficiencies along the edges. And that's what you're going to want to go after and make sure that this, the dust can be pulled. And their problems are horrendous when things go bad. So I really want to make sure that that subdivision, the dentures that they have, I'm really understanding the responsibility they have to everybody else and to the community.
Thank you, sir. Could I just, before, I know people are legal, we only got like five minutes before we have to exit, but just a quick showing hands, how many people like what they saw tonight?
Woo!
How many don't like what they saw tonight? Does anybody have a hand? How many people do not like what they saw here tonight?
How about half white?
We'll give you a maybe, but do not like. Michael, was that a yes? Did you vote twice, Michael?
Just half white.
These guys are on, how about baby?
Okay.
Okay. Would you have some comment cards? Thank you so much for your input. We appreciate it. We've taken a lot of notes. We'll try to address the concerns. Thank you all, drive safely. Would you have some comment cards in the rear? If you want my phone number, I can give it to you right now. It's 314-402-8988. Or you can email me at jaybrennan@mckelveyhomes.com. My first initial J, my last name Brennan, B-R-E-N-N-A-N, at mckelveyhomes.com. Thank you. Thank you, Representative Beck. I think Lisa Clancy as well, but thank you, Lisa. Thank you all for being here.